All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
...at 7 o'clock on the nose. This is the 176th regular meeting. We're at Greenfield High School Cafeteria, 21 Bar Avenue. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time as anyone else recording the meeting. Seeing no one, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Sun. Counselor Lovett. President Allison.
Present.
Counselor Pyke. Counselor Wayne. Counselor Burge. Counselor Childs. Counselor Leonovich. Counselor Mass.
Thank you. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, this is voluntary.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the November 15th Town Council minutes?
(Inaudible).
Oh, well, everyone really wants to do that, perfect.
Sing that.
Alright, that's going. Any discussion? Additions, corrections, changes, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Composed? Extentions? Motion carries. For the record, Counselor Childs is present. Alright, we will move on to public comment. First, anyone who wants to speak under public comment can speak on any issue they'd like to speak on. Yes, and Counsel Leonovich is present. You'll have three minutes to speak. I will not cut you off in the middle of a thought, but I will let you know when you've reached your three minutes. Greenfield residents will speak first, and then non-Greenfield residents will speak after that. I will go down the list, and once the list is over, I will open it up to anyone else who wishes to speak. George Ghul is first on the list. When you get up to the microphone, just please state your name and your address for the record, and the little button that says "Push," once the green light is on, you're Where it says "Push," now then just touch it.
Ah, hello, my name is George Ghul.
And pull the mic right up to your mouth.
Hello, my name is George Ghul, owner of the Greenfield Garden Cinemas, chairman of the GBA, and I'm on the board of GCTV. One comment, I know you guys are going to talk about the name of the city of Greenfield. I'm all in favor of having it the city of Greenfield. That's just my personal opinion, it's not the GBA's opinion. But the GBA is very concerned about your meeting next week about the split tax rate, and I'm here to let you know that we are definitely encouraging you to go to the one factor of one for the tax rate for next year. And I think Greenfield has come a long way in the last five or 10 years, and if we lose that momentum with the business community, that's not going to be good for the overall city of Greenfield. So let's hope that the town council comes to its senses and keeps it a factor of one, and work with the mayor, and make this all happen. And there you go.
Thank you. You can leave it on for now, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak under public forum or public comment? Then we'll move on to public hearings. Alright, we'll move on to public hearings. This portion of the evening is on specifically the amendment change from town to city. Is anyone here to speak to that? George, you signed up on that one as well, do you want to speak again? Okay. Anybody else? Well, I guess for the record, I'll open the public hearing at 7:05. Last call for public...okay, I'll close the public hearing at 7:05 and a half. Moving on to communications from mayor, town officers, and employees. Mayor, did you want to go first, or would you like to have Chief Strand go first, or how do you want to?
Counsel President, thank you for allowing me to have a moment of the council's time. I wanted to just do a recognition for some of our first responders in town from a call that they were participated in a week ago. So collaboratively with the fire department and the Medicare Emergency Ambulance Service in town, they delivered a healthy baby girl on a call last week. And so those... A delivery out in the field is pretty rare, and when there is one, we like to not only recognize the EMTs and paramedics that were there, but we also have pins for them that they put on their uniforms that lets everybody know that they successfully delivered a child. And in this case, it's a pink flamingo, or I'm sorry, a pink stork, that they will put on their Class A uniforms, and they will wear it with pride, knowing that they delivered a child. So if I could ask two members of the Greenfield Fire Department, EMT firefighter Tony Thurston and firefighter EMT Chip Thurston to come forward. And from Med Care Ambulance, Danielle Shaw and Tim Toth, paramedics for Med Care Ambulance. And each one of them will receive a pin and accommodation. This accommodation is awarded as a result of pre-hospital emergency medical care that contributed to the delivery of a baby girl in the early morning hours of December 7th, or December 5th, 2017, granted on this date, 20th of December 2017, at the Greenfield I appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much for the moment to speak. Yeah, so it's unusual to deliver a birth out in the field, but Mr. Toth has delivered 14 in his many, many years as a medic, so thank you again.
So I don't have anything pressing, if you want to move on quickly, I just have a couple comments. And I know it's the holiday season, and we want to adjourn early. First, I have serious concerns about the proposal for reconsideration of a TIF. A TIF, Tax Increment Financing Proposal, is part of a process, a legal process that goes through guidance from the state and communication with the state agency. When a community makes that commitment, that promise, it means something, and Greenfield had entertained a twist from TIF from the Abercrombie Building Preservation Project that last meeting, and it was approved. That approval from the town council represents a commitment from Greenfield, and that commitment was used to continue financing package and continue to work on the project. It would be unfortunate if the council would reneg on that proposal to reconsider and to abandon it. It's our reputation, our commitment that we deal with state agencies, that once we make a commitment, we vote and approve it, then it should stand. My personal opinion only. My other comment is, I think it's time that, particularly in this holiday season, that we work together. We've had great success over the last years I've been here. We've done a number of initiatives and projects, and the mayor's office, the executive side, the municipal government that everyone sees every day is ready, willing, and able to assist the council on its initiatives that are best for the community. And we continuously work only in the interest of our community. So I thank you all for your time, I thank you for this whole year of commitment that you've given, and for those of you that are leaving, we hope to see you soon. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor?
Good evening, counselors, I'll give you a moment to get the map in front of you. It's just one page, double-sided. So since our last report, GSET has continued to work on expansion. We have worked on our process, how quickly we can activate certain areas, and I wanted to show you this map because we feel that we're ready to move along at a much more accelerated pace. We have on our website currently some certain areas north of Beacon that will be lit up, but after having a chance to work and get some experience in how to light up those areas, we're now saying that the entire yellow area, every bit of the north, all the streets, every area will be lit up by May, which represents a pretty significant increase in the rate of activation for the town. In addition, at the bottom left, there's a darker blue area that represents what we think of as the hillside Devon Street District, and we will be laying cable, fiber, excuse me, in that area. We anticipate that that part of town will also be lit up by the end of May. So by the end of May, we expect to have the full core of the city completely activated and lit. That will allow us to cover approximately 2,500 to 3,000 more houses than we currently do now, including some apartment buildings and some multi-unit dwellings as well. That is almost twice as fast as what our initial estimates were, so we are constantly working to try and get the project rolled out as quickly as we can to as many people as we can. We're able to do that because of the work that we've put in to get the LCPs in the northern part of the town completed. That took a while, it was a lot of work being done that wasn't exactly reflected in coverage areas. Now we're at the point where with that work being done, we can move a lot faster and have coverage for a lot more people. As far as customers are concerned, I showed you this last month, which is a basic net invoices. We came in above our projections for the month of November for net invoices. We are just over $12,000 on our way to our December numbers, and we should hit those as well, despite some scheduling difficulties with weather and holidays. That means that we will have essentially doubled our monthly income since September. That's a good start, I'm pleased with getting that accomplished. We have to do that several more times, so we don't think that that's anything other than one good step on a longer road that we have to go. Additionally, we spent some time this past month making sure that we were up to date on all our regulatory findings and filings. We have continued to work with both DTC and DPU, neither of whom wishes to be our regulator. We think it's important that we don't just sit back and wait and find out what somebody thinks, so we're trying to engage both DTC and DPU. We're also working with the FCC as a new broadband carrier, just to make sure, and they've been very helpful working with lawyers in their office to make sure that beyond the 477 filing, we know we do and have done, if there's anything else we need to do, because I think it's really important that we get the regulatory piece right. I have no answers for you at all about DPU or DTC, 164, Section 58, none of that is clear. We have spoken with our own lawyers and with their lawyers. They're committed to keep working with us, but no one knows where we belong right now. So we will continue to try to find a home, if only so we are clear on what regulations do in fact apply to us and don't. We continue to operate under the guidance that was originally requested by Elizabeth from DLS, that says that we operate as a municipal department. That is the guidance that we have, so that's how we are operating, and as soon as we have any more information to share in that area, we will share it with you. We have begun quite a bit of work on marketing and an ad campaign. We have started scheduling information sessions, excuse me, with local organizations around town. We're working with a graphic artist to update our visual branding. Once we're done with that, we will start a more extensive advertising campaign. The direct marketing campaign we're doing now has been successful, we're adding newer customers. Again, that's great, we need to add more, we know that, so we're also looking at new products, including ways to bundle content with people along with internet services. Last thing I'll say is we're upgrading portions of our website and Facebook platforms so we can better communicate with the public. That's an ongoing process, it isn't just one set date, we'll do that forever. So overall, I feel like we're taking some good steps forward. We've managed cash, Elizabeth and I are working on a pro forma, and we're paying as much attention as we can to being as frugal as we can while moving forward as quickly as possible. Do you have anything you want to add?
Not at all.
Questions, counselors?
First of all, thank you on the regulatory issues. I know those are going to continue to be complicated and probably need to get kicked up. I was very disappointed that the state auditor, knowing that those issues existed, chose not to dig into something that clearly has statewide implications. I do have some questions about your numbers, and I know that there's a long way to go, I recognize that you said that.
Absolutely.
What is the current monthly payroll for GSET? Ballpark it.
It's just under $10,000 a week.
For all of the employees?
Yes.
$10,000 a week, so that's about...
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand a month.
About forty thousand.
And does that include fringe benefits?
No, it does not.
How much are we paying for fringe?
It's about $26,000 a quarter.
Quarter, so that's a little under $10 a month, right? About eight a month, is that ballpark?
Yes.
$8.66, thank you. So just on payroll alone, to break even, you need to be about four times the revenue that you currently have, correct?
Yes, it's probably more than that.
More than that.
Because of the additional work that we need to do.
How much time, Mr. Long, are you spending working on GSET?
It varies week by week, but I spend...
On the average?
Fifty to sixty percent of my time at the moment.
And you're a completely municipally played employee, correct?
At the moment, yes.
How many other employees are municipal employees are spending a substantial amount of their time working for GSET?
I think it's mostly me, if you say substantial, it's mostly me.
More than five or 10% of their time?
I think it's mostly me.
Is there a memorandum of understanding between, and this may be a question for the mayor, between the mayor's office and the commissioner, who is also the mayor, to reimbursement to the town for the time that you're spending working on GSET for your salary and wages and fringe?
That is a question for the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, is that something that you would consider pursuing? Do you have a projection of when GSET will be cash flow neutral? Not positive, just neutral?
Just neutral, yeah. It will take anywhere from 12 to 16 months to do that.
And do you anticipate coming back to the council for more operating funds?
No.
And do you anticipate acquiring funds from other resources outside of the council other than from users?
Absolutely, yeah, I think I said last time, we're looking into grants, into federal programs that are appropriate for GSET. We're pursuing several different avenues to see if we can take some of the grants and programs that are available to us and use them.
And what about other sources of municipal funds?
Other sources of municipal, at the moment, we really focus mostly on state and federal. I can't think of any.
You took $25,000 from school building, on crack?
I know that that was the money that was appropriated from, I'm not as familiar with that, but I do know that that money had come through MSBA and the retainage after the building out of this high school.
And that money was all authorized by the taxpayers before GSET existed, correct?
That's my understanding, yeah.
But, so you don't anticipate any other municipal funds being used for the support of GSET operations or for the physical structure, for any of the equipment?
I'm operating, go ahead.
There is an existing capital for the build-out of the initial wireless, we're using the balance of that to help us with the CapEx.
And do you have all the fiber that you need for build-out?
We actually just finished purchasing the fiber for the dark blue area here. We have finished all the fiber purchases that we need for that. We have additional fiber beyond that. I actually don't know off the top of my head, that's more of a technical question. I do know we will end up with fiber, do we have every bit of fiber we need for all build-out? I don't know that fully.
Is, have you budgeted for that in your build-out analysis, not to come back to the council? How are you going to fund that capital improvement?
Again, some of that's going to depend on what the final disposition of GSET is. Is it a town department, is it an MLP? That's up in the air. Excuse me? Or is it an enterprise fund as well?
When do you anticipate, we have obviously a budget process that begins in the spring. Do you anticipate that GSET will be in this year's municipal budget?
I think it's possible, that's up to the mayor.
When do you think we'll have a final disposition on whether or not it's, when do we anticipate the budget forthcoming, do you know?
Yeah, we're following the statute and the town charter, so most likely March, early April is when we typically get it out.
So we'll know by March or April what's happening?
Yes.
So you'll need to have an answer to that somewhat thorny issue by March or April?
We'll probably need to do it without regulatory oversight as well, because part of the issue is, are we going to be an MLP or not? And my guess is that we will not have an answer for that, so at that point, we'll have to take guidance from DLS and where we can.
Do you anticipate coming back to the council for authority to operate under a different
Counselor, our status is so up in the air as far as an operating entity at the moment, I'm not sure I can answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Further questions? Counsel Pyke?
I just have a question about the $2 million left over, it might be for you, Mr. Mayor, from the Greenfield High School building. I've been getting phone calls about the leftover $2 million. Shouldn't that money have gone toward the payment of the high school rather than...
Elizabeth? Yeah, that money that is left over is an appropriation, it's not actually cash on hand. There was about $24,000 left, that was cash on hand that we borrowed. It's the balance of the appropriation that they took, I think it was 2.25 or something, we're using $730,000 to do some additional projects, the rest of it is going to get rescinded and will no longer be available to spend. So it could not be used to pay down a debt.
Thank you.
Further questions? I have one question, it's for you, Elizabeth. If we're operating GSET as a town department currently, does that mean at the end of the budget year, there could be interdepartmental transfers to fund certain things in GSET?
Possibly, health insurance, retirement, the fringe.
Is that the only thing we would anticipate doing an interdepartmental transfer for, or are there other things that could potentially be interdepartmentally transferred for within GSET?
Those are the only things that come to mind right now, that aren't getting covered under GSET.
So, okay, so if in fact, if in fact we're, and you would only be able to do that if we were operating as a municipal department, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so with it being up in the air as to whether it's an MLP or a municipal department or an enterprise fund, at what point do we pick one and stick to that? What I don't want to see is interdepartmental transfers, and two months later, we're an enterprise fund or we're an MLP. That's my concern.
And I understand that concern. We're going to have to make a decision before the fiscal year ends.
Okay.
We're going to need to know, and if we're going to be an enterprise fund, we'll have to adopt it for July 1. All of the assets and any cash on hand in GSET would then transfer to the enterprise, so the enterprise would then have all of the equipment, fiber, et cetera.
Okay. Any further questions? Seeing nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from school superintendent or school committee?
Hi, everyone. The superintendent was not able to attend this evening, but I do have a statement from her that I'll read off to you now. have a statement from her that I'll read off to you now. Good evening, councilors. I am unable to join you tonight. However, I wanted to provide a brief snapshot of happenings in the school department for tonight's meeting as we close out 2017 and head into the new year. Our schools recently held family events, including holiday concerts at all of our elementary schools and Greenfield Middle School. I was able to attend GMS's concert and can speak to the quality of our music program, the talent of our students, and the joy of infusing arts education into our curriculum. Mrs. Maria Scoetara, the GHS band director, and her students have been spreading holiday cheer and singing festive holiday songs at schools and central office today and tomorrow. In addition, federal street students decorated and delivered wreaths to the library, fire, police, recreation department, and other community locations this week. Thanks to the council for your support of music and arts in our schools. Four Corners will be holding its second annual all-school read-in this Friday with special guest readers, including superintendent and mayor. We are also proud to report that Greenfield Middle School and MSA's robotics team won first place in a recent competition. There's a story in the recorder all about that. As a reminder, GPS will be on December break starting with a half-day on Thursday, that's tomorrow, 12:21. Classes resume on Tuesday, January 2nd. Central office will be closed Friday and Monday. Looking to the new year, the schools are closed in observance for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day on January 15th and have a professional development day the following day, Tuesday, January 16. There will be a new school committee starting next month. An organizational meeting has yet to be scheduled to elect a new slate of officers. The school committee wishes to congratulate newly-elected members of the town council, and we look forward to working together on behalf of our schools and community. Thank you for your service to our community, wishing you and yours a happy and healthy holiday season and looking forward to seeing you in the new year. So that's from Jordana. And at the school committee level, just a quick note to say that there's ongoing policy review that's underway. The committee recently, at our December meeting, approved governance goals for the group, and we look forward to further conversation and setting district goals for Greenfield Public Schools. As well, we say goodbye to members Farrell and member Tripp, and we welcome new members Ekstrom and Karen, and welcome back, member Alexander and member Hollins. And let's see, and as soon as they get in, we'll be launching right into budget season come January. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Ricketts?
I just want to share a story that I was out to dinner recently, and Bobby Provost had talked to me. He's from Lydon, but he sends his children to Greenfield. He choiced in, and one of his children was chosen for Project 351. Is that what it's called?
Fantastic.
And how excited. And he just went on and on about the difference between Pioneer and Elcom and a Greenfield, and how his children have bloomed and how they were met at where they really truly are in school. They weren't kept back and having to wait, and so they were able to excel. And so to sit there and listen to this father go on and on and on about the Greenfield schools, I was like, I just wanted to email your whole school committee and just tell you about that, because it was just so wonderful to hear and the power of that choicing in and what it meant to them. And to be part of a project where they're going to go to Boston and be recognized and to do community work. So I just want to applaud the schools, and that's such a success story. So I'm so proud to hear all of that.
Thanks a lot. Glad to hear it, too.
Counselor Mass?
You may not have the answer to this, but I understand that there was a pipe that burst, speaking of arts, in the Federal Street School art room, and that we're using insurance proceeds to cover the cost of that. Do you know how quickly you anticipate that room to be up and functioning again?
I do not know. Mayor, do you have any idea?
If it's not up and running by our next meeting, if you could get us an idea of when the timeline would be, that would be helpful.
Absolutely, not a problem.
Further questions? Seeing nothing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, it's for the mayor. Mayor, there's one more question for you. Do you mind coming up?
I'm so sorry. I've been sitting up here trying to rack my brain by staring at you so the question would come back. I just wanted to know that I heard that the new community center will be open in February, and if we have put together some type of a committee to decide like how it's going to be used in the evenings, like are we trying to piece that together now?
Yes, we're hoping it'll be February or March for the move-in and completion. And then I had announced earlier in October that in January, we would form a committee to address scheduling for the community space or the building as a whole. So the council is welcome to offer a couple of councilors to be on that committee so that there's some strong communication between that group, the community center, and the council. Welcome.
Fern, Counselor Sun, rather, here's the mic.
As far as the community center, I drive by there a lot, and the guys down there sometimes work from seven in the morning till midnight, and I think they're doing an excellent job. And whenever it opens, it's going to be a great addition to the town. And my father-in-law, he thinks it's a great idea, so.
Well, thank you. I think the whole town is going to appreciate it. We've got at least two more meeting spaces, one small, one very large, and it's going to be open at least six days a week. So hopefully, we'll find some events and activities to do in the senior community center. A lot of people are just calling at Jay-Z's place.
Anything further for the mayor? Okay, thank you, Mayor. No problem. Okay, moving on. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Childs.
Grab the mic. Just to let everybody know, every page is one page off, so if it's fifteen, it's sixteen. If it's eighteen, it's nineteen, blah, blah.
Thanks.
Okay, page sixteen. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council, pursuant to chapter section two-dash-ten, accept the following appointment by the mayor to the historic commission, Robert Moorhead, for a three-year term to expire December 20th. And that was a unanimous yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Counselor Childs?
Page nineteen. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council, pursuant to chapter section two-dash-ten, accept the following appointment by the mayor to the youth commission, Crystal Cleaver, for a three-year term to expire December 20th.
Motion's been made and seconded.
It was a unanimous yes.
Oh, December 2020. That's, yep, that's what you meant to say.
What did I say?
Twentieth. So twenty-twenty, right?
December 2020.
Perfect. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Counselor Childs?
Page twenty-two. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council, pursuant to chapter section two-dash-ten, accept the following appointment by the mayor to the agricultural commission, Alicia Williams, for a three-year term to expire December 2020.
Motion's been made and seconded.
It was a unanimous decision, yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Last one, Counselor Childs?
Yes, sir. Page twenty-five. The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council, pursuant to chapter section two-dash-ten, accept the following appointment by the mayor to the human rights commission, Rachel Gordon, for a three-year term to expire December 2020.
Yeah, it appears the candidate withdrew, or the...
Yes, that was a withdrawal, and we had no vote on that.
So there's no second, so that motion dies?
That dies.
Yep. All right, moving on. Motion to suspend the rules of procedure.
I moved that the town council suspend the rules of procedure. Six order of motions as written in the packet.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. This is a non-debatable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two noes.
Who voted no?
I heard Counselor Maloney and Counselor Ricketts. Okay. Was it two-thirds required, so that motion passes? Counselor Mass?
I moved that the town council reconsider's the following motion approved by the town council on November 15, 2017. Fiscal, order number fiscal year eighteen dash forty-three as written in the packet.
Is there a second? Any second? Counselor Leonovich, second. Motion's been made and seconded. This is a motion to reconsider, so this requires a majority vote to reconsider the motion, put it back on the floor. Oh, I'm sorry. It's two-thirds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And those who are opposed, please raise their hand. Motion fails. All right, moving on. Counselor Mass, is this yours, or did this go to...
It went to...
Wait, okay, Counselor Childs?
It's not page forty-five, it is forty-six. The town council moved that it be ordered to amend the charter of the town of Greenfield by deleting the word "town" and inserting in its place the word "city" throughout the document, except in Article One, Section One-dash-seven, Definitions D, General Laws. The words "general laws," all lowercase letters, shall mean "laws," which apply alike to all cities and towns, to all cities or to a class of municipalities, of which Greenfield is a member. The city of Greenfield shall be governed by the general laws applied to this city. Applied to cities.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Counselor Childs, did you guys have a...
Yeah, we discussed it, and everybody was in favor.
Unanimous positive recommendation. Discussion? Counselor Mass, you proposed that they'll give you the chance to...
I'll try to be brief. I was on the council in 2004 when we last tried to do this, right after the municipal charter was passed and we introduced the city government. I can tell you that the mood has been very different this time around as compared to last time. I know President Alice was present. Mayor, I think, was either president or councilor, came on soon thereafter. No one came to our public hearing tonight. Last time, we had probably eight or ten people, most of whom were opposed. This time, I got a handful of emails from people on both sides. Most of the people who emailed me who were opposed were people who proactively wanted to go back to a selectmen form of government. It wasn't so much that they disagreed over Greenfield, the form of government that we have being called a city, they just didn't like being a city. They wanted to be a town, both in form of government and in name. Given that, I think that the time has finally come to, and what I really do consider us being a city with an identity crisis, we are conflicted on so many issues that we're divided on, but we're united on far, far more than we are divided on. And I think this is something that we can finally come to a consensus with, and once we do it, we don't have to revisit it ever again. Thank you.
Counselor Childs?
Yes, thank you. Nobody came to the meeting the other night that we had and talked against being a city. And when we talked as a group, it was all a unanimous, we'd like to have a city.
Further discussion? I'm just going to say one thing. We did receive some emails, and I'll have the clerk place those emails into the record. Just the emails that the clerk received, they will go into the record. On the actual matter at hand, there are some, I received an email, and I think we all did, from someone who suggested that it shouldn't matter, that the state doesn't, the state knows that we're a town, a city, see, I can't even get it straight. The state knows that we're a city, even if we call ourselves a town. And we, the council, had to have a special meeting based on the issue of town versus city. And it does matter what it says in their charter, because when we called the state to ask if I could just sign the election warrant, instead of having to call a special meeting to vote on it, which I think you all remember that meeting that we had to have just to vote on that, they said no, because it says town council in the charter, therefore, we are a town. And that was their ruling. So it does make a difference, and the state does make decisions based on what our charter actually says, no matter whether we are a city or a town. And my last point on this is whether we're a city or a town, we're going to have the same good things and the same bad things. It's just that we're going to call ourselves something different. So I'm glad that this is coming up, and I hope that we can pass this, and I hope that it paves the way for never having this discussion ever again. Anything further? Counselor Ricketts?
I agree, President Alice. I'm glad that we will not be discussing it. The only thing I want to say is I don't believe we really do have identity crisis. I think that in the minds of some people, they'll always think town, and others will think city, and that's just the way it's going to be. But I don't want to be negative about it at all. We're going to change it as a city, but let's not put the spin on it about anything for people who want to still be called town. It is what it is. So I'm with you. Let's just vote and be done with this.
Anything further? Seeing nothing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. It's a unanimous motion. Counselor Leonovich? I guess it's probably forty-eight.
The town council votes their intention to consider laying out Silvercrest Lane and Silvercrest Circle as a public ways, and refers to the petition to the planning board. Refers the petition to the planning board.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. This is to initiate the process to the planning board. There's not much that needs to be said about it, because we're just initiating. However, we do this, I can remember doing it multiple times, many times. I think this council's done it before, too. So is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions or similar papers? Nope. Report of committees? Does anybody want to report? Nope. Unfinished business? Old business. Counselor Mass?
Sorry, Mr. President. On the November 29 meeting, we voted to adopt a factor of one-point-oh-one, a factor of one for residential property and a factor of one-point-oh-eight-oh-eight for all commercial property. We received an email just this morning from the assessor's office indicating a technical error in the language of that vote, that they were concerned about as far as DOR setting the rate if it is in fact, if the override is adopted, and also some concerns related to whether or not we could adopt a factor of one if it was, the veto is sustained. To that end, I worked with the assessor's office, the clerk's office, the mayor's office, the finance director's office, and prepared a motion that I'm going to ask not be, I'm going to make the motion tonight, but I'm going to ask that it be tabled till the 28th. I'm making it tonight so that we don't have the issue of it being objected to by more than three members at the first same meeting. That will give additional time for the finance director's team to do any additional inquiry and tweaking. and tweaking they need, given that this was raised, brought to our attention this morning. On the attached to the motion, you have some supporting documentation from the treasurer, from the finance director's office under four point two point two, later the split tax rate, that the preferred method to split is to take, to set one factor and split all others off that factor. We essentially set two factors. I don't believe we've done anything wrong. I think our legislative intent is abundantly clear from the conversation, from the public hearings, from the mayor's veto and rationale. I think we all know what we did. But to make it clear for DOR, and so we have no problems going, doing whatever we need to do next, I move that it be ordered, that it be ratified and confirmed that on November twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, the Greenfield Town Council, by a majority, six yes and four no, voted that it be ordered that the Town Council adopted a minimal residential factor of point nine one nine two, resulting in a split rate for all other classes of property, commercial, industrial, and personal for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. This was the true intent of the council, order number fiscal year two thousand eighteen zero four one A, the veto of which, by the mayor on December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, is hereby acknowledged. Just...
Motion's been made and seconded.
And again, I'm going to ask to table this, but just for clarity for the public, the point one, the point nine one nine two on the residential factor is the same as setting the commercial and everything else at point oh eight, one point oh eight oh eight. And if there's any further issue, it will be brought to our attention, and we can correct it within this motion on the next meeting on the twenty-eighth. I would move that this be tabled to a date certain, February, December twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Just a little bit of bad news. Seems we might have pulled the House of Representatives here. We never read the public hearing notice for the public hearing for the city-town change, so I'm going to ask that that be read and that we revote that vote to make sure that it's legal. So I guess when I said I hope we don't have to talk about it again, I was wrong. Nope. Would you mind reading the public hearing, and then I will reopen the public, or open the public hearing?
In accordance with the Home Rule Charter of the Greenfield, for the last time, Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M. at the Greenfield High School Cafeteria, Twenty-One Bar Avenue, to receive input on the following charter amendment. To amend the charter of the town of Greenfield by deleting the word "town" and inserting in its place the word "city" throughout the document, except in Article One, Section One dash seven, definitions D, general laws. The words "general laws" in all lowercase letter shall mean "laws," which apply alike to all cities and towns, to all cities or class of municipalities of which Greenfield is a member. The city of Greenfield shall be governed by the general applicable laws of the city.
Thank you for reading the public hearing notice. I did close it, but I'm going to open the public hearing at seven fifty-two. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter that has shown up since the last time no one was here to speak on it? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-two and a half. Is there a motion, please, Councilor Mass? Or you can, we can just reaffirm our vote, or we can make the motion again?
I move to reaffirm the vote of the Greenfield Town Council to adopt the charter change as written in the packet.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Oh, okay, it was unanimous again. Okay. Thank you for indulging me in that. I don't want to have to have another special meeting. Any other old business? New business?
First reading. The sum of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents to be reassigned from the excess funds of the hurricane, Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project. The sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of town properties not included in annual valuations.
Thank you, Council Burge. So at this point, I just wanted to say... Oh, okay, go ahead, and then I'll talk after.
I hope to be brief. Thank you. I received in the mail last week two gift certificates, one for seventy dollars from Bakers and one for a hundred and fifty dollars from Wilsons. This was overwhelming. I cried. I'm so happy. However, in the letter, they thanked me for my community work. And although I sit on various committees and boards throughout Greenfield, a lot of my work is the Greenfield Town Council. So at this time, I'd like to pass these over to our town clerk. I would like Bakers to go to the literacy project so that they could buy pens and notebooks and such, and the Greenfield family in to get the Wilsons. I am not allowed to donate them on my own. It must be a full council vote for the Ethics Commission. And so I'm hoping at this time and through this holiday season, instead of me just throwing those away, I would hope that you will join in with me and that that be from the full city council.
The second? So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay, so I will get to what I was going to say. I want to wish everyone happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas and Kwanzaa and any other thing that any one of us celebrates. It's been a pleasure working this past year with everyone on the council. It's been a pleasure to serve as the president of the council. This is my last meeting as president, and it's been quite the ride. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's my last televised meeting as president, put it that way. But it's been a pleasure working with everyone, and I appreciate everyone's assistance and help and desire to be here and doing the business that the council is supposed to be doing. And I hope that everyone has a happy and safe season through the end of this year. I will see all of you on the twenty-eighth, as I was just reminded, but figured I'd get this out of the way now because that one's a special meeting. Anything from anyone else? Councilor Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not my last meeting either, one more to go, but my last city council meeting for the foreseeable future. So I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you to my colleagues currently sitting at the table, as well as those that I've sat with in the past. That five and a half years went by kind of quick, now that I look back on it. So here we are, it's a new day, and I'm taking some time to move on. I will miss this service. I want to just thank the voting public of Greenfield for putting your confidence in me for the past two terms. The first half-term was an appointment, but, you know, thank you, Greenfield, all the same. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be so bold as to claim that I'm leaving the city better than I found it, but I would claim that this service has made me a better person and a better citizen than I was when I started. So thank you to the town for allowing me the opportunity to do this work, to strive to improve the town, or at least maintain the town, and in so doing, improve myself. Thank you all.
Anything further? So I'm... Councilor Sun?
I just want to thank everybody that's here for the great job they've done. Mark and Brickett. Mark, I'm going to miss you, sitting here on the council with all of us. And I just thank everybody and wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Anything further? So thank you to the councilors who are leaving, and welcome to those who are coming. We'll get to that on January first. Is there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing nothing, is there a motion to adjourn? All is in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We're adjourned at seven fifty-nine.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at four hundred Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at seven seven four three one nine one, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at seven seven two zero eight three eight and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since nineteen seventy-two. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at four one three four two two one one four three. Peoples United Bank. Located at forty-five Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at seven seven four three seven one three, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at twenty-three Fisk Ave. Call them at four one three seven seven two three one two two, or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.